Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, October 16, 2023. It's great to see all of you here in the audience tonight. As you may imagine, we don't get such a robust crowd, but it's because we have a number of heroes present in the room tonight, and thank you for coming to celebrate them. It's our honor to celebrate and share with you, and we also welcome our friends appearing on Zoom tonight. This is a great occasion to celebrate the city of Lakewood. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Bokey.
Here.
Branstutter.
Here.
Plenum member Laura Sella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a forum.
Thank you very much. As many of us have witnessed over the past week, we recognize in watching the news that there is unfortunately plenty of strife and heartache in the world these days. So I ask that we pause prior to our Pledge of Allegiance to provide a moment of silence for ourselves, a moment of silence for families everywhere, and for those who serve the cause of peace around the world, including the men and women of our armed forces and the men and women who served this great city and the Lakewood Police Department. So please stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the state of America, and to the republic. Well, thank you very much for that. And again, we are here for the first section of tonight's agenda, Proclamations and Presentations, and we are honored tonight to accompany all of you in witnessing the police commissioning and award ceremony by our own Lakewood Police Department. So at this time, Chief Smith, I call on you and Judge Mansfield from our Lakewood Municipal Court to come to the front as you are and present the oath for officers joining the force here in Lakewood.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, and city manager. First, I want to thank you so much for taking the time to honor officers who have done so much to try to bring calm and peace to the city of Lakewood. As Chief of Police, I'm very proud of every one of them. I thank them on a daily basis for their efforts, for everything they've done to contribute to the city of Lakewood. Every one of them, every one of them represented here today, and the ones who continue to patrol to make the city safe, have done an awesome job. And I'm so very proud and thankful that they are here and that you've taken the time to honor them. But I have one favor to ask for the crowd. Will you stand up, turn around, and give them a round of applause? Thank you so much. You have no idea how much your support means to all of them. Judge?
Thank you so much, Chief. My name is Judge Lisa Mansfield, and I preside over Lakewood Municipal Court, which proudly serves Lakewood, DuPont, and Stillacoon. We also host a Veterans Treatment Board. I'm so happy to be here tonight. This is one of my favorite things to do as a judge, and I would like to invite the new officers down. Oh, oh, call them names. Okay, so they didn't give me the memo. So I will give the oath of office.
Oh, sure. Okay.
So we're going to start off with two promotions. Lieutenant Pete Johnson. And I think a lot of people were here, didn't you? I think that's just his family. And Sergeant David Mullen. Also taking their oath tonight are three of our new officers and our new court compliance officer. So Officer Jeremy Kimbrough. Officer Jonathan Harper. Officer Jeff Burgland. And Court Compliance Officer Julian Massey.
If you'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and of the State of Washington that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and the laws of the city of Lakewood, and will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability truthfully, faithfully, diligently, and impartially perform the duties of the office of in and for the city of Lakewood and Pierce County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law. Congratulations.
Our next three awardees have completed their probation. If you'll let me call the names and get them up here, and then I'll give you a round of applause at the end. So the first two have completed their probation in a promoted position of sergeant, which means that they've completed a year in that position successfully without getting demoted or fired. And then we have one of our officers who has likewise finished his probationary period, and it's done very well. So with Sergeant Ryan Moody, Sergeant Kevin Clark, and Officer Jack Johnson, please come forward. Our first awardee of the night is receiving a Police Chief's Commendation. Can I get Officer Stephen Moffett? Officer Moffett made a traffic stop of a known subject with a felony warrant. After arresting the subject, Officer Moffett continued his investigation and obtained consent to search the vehicle, which ended up revealing 15,000 fentanyl pills, approximately five pounds of methamphetamine, two pounds of fentanyl powder, three-quarter pounds of powder cocaine, and paraphernalia consistent with street-level distribution of narcotics. Officer Moffett's proactive police work led to the capture of a dangerous mid-level drug dealer and the seizure of a large quantity of narcotics, which would have undoubtedly been distributed in the city of Lakewood. For his highly professional performance, Officer Moffett is being awarded the Police Chief's Commendation. This next rather large group of officers is receiving the second highest award that the department offers, the Distinguished Service Medal. Before I read the names, I'll go ahead and read the narrative. On March 24, 2023, officers working swing ship patrol were advised of shots fired, as well as an explosion inside of an apartment building. Dispatch received information from various callers stating shots had been heard, alarms were going off, and smoke was visible. When the first officers arrived, they could still hear shots being fired as residents were fleeing the building. One of the residents was carrying an infant bleeding from a head wound. Officer Jack Johnson immediately began rendering aid to the infant. Officers Pingel, Bentz, and Moffett formed a team and entered the building to confront the shooter. Officers Latrell, Ames, Tapazna, and Sergeant Devaney arrived soon after and also entered the building. Officers Kiesler, Zieber, Winker, Rossin, Bucat, and Investigator Merrill also formed teams and entered the building. Once inside the building, officers noticed several 223 shell casings on the ground and the smell of gunfire, but did not immediately locate a suspect. They began systematically clearing the entire building, consisting of approximately 20 apartment units, looking for the suspect, who was now believed to be armed with an assault rifle. Outside agencies from far away, as Pialp and the Sheriff's Department arrived to assist. The suspect was eventually located and arrested later by detectives. This was a truly dangerous and rapidly evolving scenario that exposed each officer to an extreme amount of danger and stress. The officers involved demonstrated bravery, teamwork, and discipline while handling all aspects of the incident. For their exceptional performance above and beyond the call of duty involving significant risks to their life, the above-named officers are awarded the Distinguished Service Medal. For his actions rendering potentially lifesaving medical aid, Officer Johnson is awarded the Lifesaving Award. Again, I'll call the names up and have them come up, and you can do one round of applause. Sergeant Ryan Moody. Sergeant Ken Devaney. Detective Mike Merrill. Officer Stephen Moffett. Officer Cabri Ames. Officer Brian Tapazna. Officer Jared Pingel. Officer Casey Bentz. Officer Natalie Zieber. Officer Quinn Rossin. Officer Anthony Bucat. And Officer Jack Johnson. Our next award is for one of our civilian employees. It is the Police Chief's Commendation for Police Administrative Technician Svea Pitts. Administ- Technician Svea Pitts is an integral member of our Professional Standards Section, where she administratively manages all of our personnel moves, training requests, travel arrangements, as well as clerical support for our internal and background investigations and administrative use of force and pursuit reviews. She maintains all of our official department files and assists with public disclosure requests, transcription, and other duties as assigned. Svea does an exemplary job in balancing all of these tasks, often under tight deadlines. Many of these tasks are extremely confidential and technical in nature. What makes Svea such a valuable team member is her willingness to set aside what she is currently doing in order to help another department member. Her contributions have directly contributed to the overall effectiveness of our team. For her highly professional performance, Svea Pitts is being awarded the Police Chief's Commendation. Our next group of awardees is also receiving the Police Chief's Commendation, which goes to the Traffic Unit of the Police Department. Sergeant Charles Porch. Officer Mike McGittigan. Officer Jeremy Valley. And Officer Josh Northcutt. Serious injury and fatality collisions are some of the most complex and time-consuming investigations an officer can participate in. These incidents are traumatic at the start, involve long hours and all kinds of weather conditions, and can take years to resolve. In just the past few months, the Traffic Unit has investigated two collisions that resulted in multiple fatalities. In the first incident, two vehicles were traveling in excess of 70 miles an hour engaged in some sort of road rage when one of them struck an uninvolved vehicle. Three people were killed and several others were injured. Two suspects were later charged with vehicular homicide. In the second incident, a family of four was struck by a cargo van traveling at a high rate of speed. An adult female and child less than two years old were killed. The driver of the van suspected to be under the influence of illegal narcotics was arrested and charged with vehicular homicide. In addition to these incidents, members of the Traffic Unit have responded this year to assist our partner cities with fatality and serious injury collisions of their own. They have also responded to assist our Criminal Investigations Unit and Pierce County Force Investigation Team with crime scene investigations by conducting scene scans and other evidence collection. For this highly professional performance, Sergeant Charles Porch, Officer McGittigan, Officer Valley, Officer Northcutt are being awarded the Police Chief's Commendation. Our last award is for the Medal of Meritorious Service and is going to Code Enforcement Officer Bill Matthews. On April 4, 2023, an armed robbery carjacking at gunpoint occurred in the city of Lakewood. Code Enforcement Officer Bill Matthews was on duty driving his city-assigned code enforcement vehicle, performing duties in his assigned district. The carjacking suspect vehicle drove past him, nearly hitting his vehicle. Despite this, CEO Matthews was able to observe a partial plate and radio this information, along with a direction of travel to responding officers. CEO Matthews, an unarmed employee, continued to provide officers location information from a distance on the suspect vehicle and a clothing description of one of the suspects who fled from the vehicle on foot. Matthews was then able to point officers to the suspect vehicle, which led officers on pursuit before all suspects were eventually captured. CEO Matthews' calm tone on the radio in conjunction with providing succinct, accurate information was instrumental in the apprehension of multiple suspects from a violent crime. During this tense encounter in the field, CEO Matthews maintained great composure and performed exceptionally well in a capacity outside of his normal job duties. For his exceptional performance above and beyond the call of duty, Code Enforcement Officer Bill Matthews is being awarded the Medal of Meritorious Service. We're all good. If the families would like to take photos with their heroes, please come on down. We'll take a five-minute recess to allow the families to take some photographs. So we'll be a recess for five minutes for the families. So we'll be a recess for five minutes for the families. Are we back on, Madam Clerk? Great, we're back from recess, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your indulgence in celebrating the many heroes we had in the audience tonight in our own Lakewood Police Department. It's a wonderful opportunity when you can thank people for the good work that they do and give them recognition. So thank you, Assistant Chief Unfrid and Chief Smith, for doing all of the good work that you do. So now we turn to the public comments section of tonight's agenda. All the comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual in-person comment. Ms. Schumacher, have we received any written comments to identify for the record?
Mayor, we have received no written comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good, and I see that we have no public commenters who have signed in the sign-in sheet. So I will then turn to those who may be appearing virtually via Zoom. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters with their hands raised on Zoom?
Mayor, first we have Christina Minetti.
Very well, Ms. Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Christina Minetti, Lakewood. I'd like to ask that you please reconsider your decision to rename Motor Avenue Colonial Plaza. A couple of years ago, that part of Motor Avenue was redone for over a million, or maybe it was two million taxpayer dollars. I lived nearby. Now it's a glorified side street and parking spaces with fake-looking paving stones. When its name was first discussed after those changes, I thought it would be a logical thing to name it Colonial Plaza. It had always been the colonial center, after all. For me, colonial was referring to the architectural style, nothing more, a curiosity of America's past. I've lived here since I was small, and that colonial architecture used to be regarded as one of Lakewood's charming distinguishing features. The colonial style in Lakewood, it wasn't a bicentennial thing, like one might expect, but rather dates back to the nineteen thirties, when the developer Norton Clapp built the colonial center in the small colonial village on Lake Silicon. Among many other things, of course. It was really his brainchild. Growing up, I heard the name Norton Clapp and got the impression that he was regarded as one of Lakewood's founding fathers, a benevolent developer that Lakewood could be proud of. The reality actually has turned out to be pretty shocking. Maybe you read the articles in the Seattle Times and Tacoma Tribune in February of this year, so twenty twenty-three, about the racial restricted covenants project undertaken by the University of Washington and Eastern Washington University. On the map published with that study, you can see that our illustrious local developer actually hotbed of racially restrictive real estate covenants, redlining. It shocked me to see that Lakewood is like the bullseye of restrictive covenants in the area. As was what was probably the most influential developer in the area, Norton Clapp undoubtedly had some role in making sure Lakewood would show true leadership in this redlining trend. So I have changed my mind about the term colonial. Even though it does refer innocently to an architectural style, it of course also necessarily refers to our problematic colonial history and Norton Clapp's place in it. Is it really something we want to highlight in this day and age? Maybe we should focus instead on honoring the pre-colonial past? Please reconsider your decision. Maybe you could call it something really inspirational, like Piazza dell'Unità, like so many plazas in Italy, Unity Plaza, or maybe Piazza del Popolo, People's Plaza. What we really need today is unity, not more of a colonial mindset. Thanks very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Next, I see Mr. James Dunlop with a hand raised. Mr. Dunlop?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. Recently, I got an email from Maddie Immel, and I believe she works for Burck Consultancy. I didn't do anything to attract this email, but it said that she she was looking for input on the comprehensive plan update. And she was looking for people to give their input and indeed for people to be on part of the steering committee. But I was asking, was I interested? And I sort of said, yeah, fine, why not? Now, I am not suitable. I would not say, I would not say that I was suitable to be on the steering committee. I simply don't have a sense of detail. And so, not surprisingly, I got an email from Ted Phelan saying, "Thank you for your interest in the Lakewood twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan steering committee. You have not been selected to participate in the steering committee. The city is very focused on seeking new voices and faces." But you know, I saw this, and obviously, as I said, I'm not qualified for this kind of thing. I don't really have that sense of detail, but I'm thinking that new voices and new faces is kind of general code for people that don't really know what's going on and are easily led. And I think that this kind of highlights something important, like a comprehensive plan. The city is looking for it to be rubber stamped. And you know, when Burck is involved in something, that usually means they take a committee that is they take some people from Lakewood to give us the fiction of democratic representation, and they deliberately choose people who don't really know what's going on. And you know, with growth management, stuff like that, it is really complicated. And so you just lead these people along and you get the decision you want. And I just don't think that is the way to do it. If you want true democracy and for people to actually deal with the details, you should actually have a program in the city to actually educate. And I mean, when I say educate, I mean genuinely educate, not educate people to think the way you want to think, to educate people on how the complexities of growth management and comprehensive plans work so that people in Lakewood can actually make a real contribution. Because as it stands, the attempts to get public participation are in fact, in reality, just attempts to rubber stamp a decision that the city has already made. So I don't think this is very good, and I think this needs to be changed.
Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk, any others with their hands raised?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good, seeing no other virtual hands raised and no one else in the audience wishing to address counsel during public comment. I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of October second, twenty twenty-three. C, motion number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-two, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with an Isqali Indian tribe and approving work plans supporting the current partnership project at Fort Silicon Park. D, motion number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-three, authorizing the award of a contract to Marl's Corporation doing business as Amaya Electric in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-three electrical services project. E, motion number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-four, appointing Amelia Escobedo to serve on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. F, motion number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-five, reappointing Linda Smith to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. G, motion number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six, appointing Shawna Alexander and Laura Martinez and reappointing Earl Borgert, Silvian Estrella, Paige Hanson, Lonnie Neal, and Fallua Pritchard to the Lakewood Arts Commission through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. H, motion number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-seven, appointing Nancy Reed and Sheldon Thiel to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September nineteenth, twenty twenty-six. I, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Two, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of August second, twenty twenty-three. Three, Community Services Advisory Board meeting minutes of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And four, Planning Commission meeting minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any member of council wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan. I'd like to move that item E be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay, are there any other items which any member wishes to remove from consideration on the consent agenda as presented? Very well, do I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda minus item E at this time? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and seconded by Councilmember Bell, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item E. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted, minus item E. We now turn to item E, which is motion twenty twenty-three dash nine four. Do I have a motion to adopt motion twenty twenty-three dash nine four? It's been moved by Councilmember Brandstetter, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt motion twenty twenty-three dash nine four. Now we turn to discussion. I assume Councilmember Laura Sella, you have some thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We reviewed this a number of weeks ago, and I went back and looked at the evidence that was presented and my own reasoning for the way that I voted. And I feel that Ms. Escobedo would be a valuable asset to Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board, specifically how she plans to include the Isqali tribe's input as we do things around the city. So I wanted to bring that back forward and give it time for us to discuss.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of motion twenty twenty-three dash nine four signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion twenty twenty-three dash nine four has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, resolutions?
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ten, naming the plaza area on Motor Avenue Colonial Plaza.
Thank you for this, and I'll call on our Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Director, Ms. Dodsworth, to give us a bit of information on this. And then we'll move toward a motion in a second to get it on the table. Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This topic has been discussed at several city council meetings, study sessions regarding the name of Motor Avenue area. We discussed that it's been called several different things. We've had many events there, and so at this time, we were looking at either to confirm the name of it so that we could all regard it as the same location, start identifying it, branding it, things like that. And so, council, we did a survey. The overwhelming selected response was Colonial Plaza. Council gave us direction at the last study session to prepare a resolution, to make it formal, formalize the decision, and so that's what you have for you tonight.
Very good. So do we have a motion? Well, any questions of Ms. Dodsworth, Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dodsworth, I was just wondering if it was possible that maybe the Arts Commission could take a look at doing some interpretive signage at Colonial Plaza, since that was the name that seemed overwhelmingly that resonated with the public. But it would be really great to have some sort of signage or something that explains the history of the area, why it's called, what it is. I really think that that will be very helpful to dispel some sort of preconceived notions. Plus, some more art would be great, so.
Great. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Dodsworth? Deputy Mayor?
Just out of curiosity, at any time, can that plausibly rename?
Council has the authority to change the name of any city facility.
You know, after the last discussion, and I don't disagree with you guys, at the last discussion, we thought about it. And then I was thinking of Dr. Thomas and our first mayor, Harrison. Thomas and Harrison Plaza or something to that nature, to honor them, and they're just the thought to see if that would be something that...
Might be down the road, but right now, we've got a motion before.
That's why I was asking if it can be changed. That's...
The ordinance that describes the process includes the opportunity for the city council at whatever process they wanted to follow, but can change the name at some time.
I'm not asking to change it now, but it was just something that if we could do that in the future, that might be something that we might look at.
Absolutely. I will note that each have a school named after them, so they're a step ahead of the rest of us. Mr. Anderson?
Just note that General Harrison, who's a wonderful person, not only has a school named after him, he has a major building on JBLM named after him, and he has the main award for civilians at JBLM named after him. And there's something else that I'm forgetting at the moment, so we could change the name of the city, maybe.
Thank you very much. So before we get into further discussion, if there are any other questions of Ms. Dodsworth, I'll ask for a motion.
I move adoption of...
Okay, Councilmember Brandstetter has moved adoption of motion twenty twenty-three dash ten, and Councilmember Laura Sella has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Brandstetter?
I think that it is good that we have reached a decision point on something that has been just percolating for a couple of years. And I'm supportive of the name that was chosen and had the support of the community. And I think that it's very consistent with our vision for the city at thirty years, where one of the elements of that is that we're, you know, have a recognition of our history and that this is a name that is consistent with that thought that's there. So I'm glad that we're putting this to bed, so to speak.
Any other comments? Well, very good. I just might chime in a note and appreciate Ms. Dodsworth and her work on getting the survey out to the community. We all had a chance to throw some possible alternative names out there for consideration. And again, those who want to participate did, and they responded back on the survey. And as we noted in the meeting minutes from the last meeting, it was an overwhelming response in favor of the proposed name Colonial Plaza. You know, I might also note that the architecture is significant. The iconic Lakewood Theater is one that's certainly steeped in that genre of architecture. And it is the symbol, if not one of the symbols, that typifies what people think about Lakewood and its center. So I am in support of the proposed name and the resolution. So unless there's any further thoughts or discussion, all those in favor of resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes. Now move to any unfinished business. Mr. Coffield?
There is not this evening, Mayor.
Great. And I don't see any items of new business, so... And I don't see any items of new business, so it looks like we're turning to reports by City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I'd like to start off and turn the podium over to Police Chief Patrick Smith to provide the council a update on, um, third quarter LPD activities. So with that, Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Um, I want to go over the third quarter report for our crime and, uh, calls for service within the city. Um, so far this year, our calls for service have increased, uh, repeatedly, uh, as you'll see the graphs year over year and quarter over quarter. Um, you'll see a steady increase, uh, of about twelve point nine percent, uh, year-to-date in our number of calls for service. The graph on the right shows the year-to-date, and as you'll see, from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three, there's been a steady increase in the number of calls for service that we receive in the city of Lakewood. Fortunately, our officers have been able to adjust to the steady increase in calls for service, um, in addition to, uh, the changes in the laws that, uh, govern how we operate within the city. As a result of the increase in calls for service, you'll also see that there has been an increase in the number of arrests and activity of the officers. Uh, from second quarter of this year to third quarter of this year, the change is six percent. And as a comparison to two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, we're up twenty-nine percent on, on our total number of arrests, and our year-to-date total of increase is twenty-five point six percent. In the graph over to the right, you'll see from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three, there's been a steady increase in the number of arrests that officers have made within the city. Our crime against persons, uh, is the area where we've seen a significant increase in activity. Uh, in all of the, twenty twenty-two, we had five homicides. So far this, this year, we have already reached that number. Um, we've been holding steady at that number. The best part about that is, um, all of those cases are resolved. Within four of, of the cases, we were able to resolve within six hours with a suspect in custody, and the last one took about twelve hours, and all of the cases resolved, all suspects were in custody, um, once identified. As you go down, we show a three point six percent change from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and our two thousand and twenty-two third quarter to twenty-three is up six point six percent, and our total for, uh, second quarter to third quarter is up seven point six percent. But if you look at our graph over on the lower right-hand corner from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three comparison, you'll, you'll notice that the total number of crimes have, uh, come down from there. Our crimes against property is one of the better areas where we've seen significant change. Um, so far this year, in our year-to-date, we're down thirteen point nine percent. The, uh, critical area there is in our residential burglaries, which are down twenty-five point two percent. And all areas of property crime are down, except our, our one Achilles' heel, uh, which has been motor vehicle theft. Motor vehicle theft has, uh, increased significantly, up to thirty-four point three percent, primarily due to the issue with the ignition in the Hyundai's and Kia's, as well as the officer's inability to pursue stolen vehicles once noticed, and our inability to go after, uh, suspects who are responsible. On our pursuits and eludes, our, our pursuits have pretty much re- remained, uh, uh, down for the most part, uh, or steady where they were, and our eludes have, uh, increased about ten point six percent from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Um, from third quarter to, uh, third quarter comparison, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, they're up seventeen point seven percent. And, uh, overall, our, our lose from second quarter to third quarter were up thirty percent. Uh, however, our pursuits have, have pretty much remained, uh, steady. Um, we were able to bring our shots fired down only by two point five percent. Um, uh, we, we'd like to show this because anytime shots of fire within the community can have a tremendous impact on the peace and stability of, of the community and the fear of crime. Uh, this has been our number one Achilles' heel, our motor vehicle theft. Um, you'll, you'll see on the right side, lower, lower corner from two thousand and twenty-one, um, it was primarily minimal in terms of stolen vehicles within the city, and we have, uh, doubled in two thousand and twenty-two and, uh, gone up even more in two thousand and twenty-three as relates to, uh, the stolen vehicles, and as I mentioned, all of this hinges upon the, the changes in the laws, which, uh, truly don't allow officers to pursue. So we're showing a thirty-four point three percent, uh, increase in motor vehicle theft within the city. And, um, this part, I, I want to stop and, and thank you guys for helping our officers significantly and in voting to, uh, allow us to get the flock safety cameras. It has helped significantly. Uh, we haven't, we've only had it in for like a month, uh, but we can see, uh, the officer's reaction. We have been able to, uh, step in and prevent crime from happening. We know when, uh, stolen vehicles are entering our town center, officers are able to flood the area to prevent, uh, a secondary crime of a burglary, a theft, robbery, uh, from occurring. And so I, I, I can't thank you enough, and I tell you, uh, we are the envy of many surrounding agencies because, uh, they can't, many of them can't wait to get on board, uh, to have the flock safety cameras. So thank you so much, uh, on behalf of every officer who, who uses this system. Uh, overall, our collision, traffic collisions were down eighteen point four percent, uh, oh, year over year, twenty-nine percent from third quarter last year to third quarter this year, and two point nine percent, uh, as compared to second quarter to third quarter. Um, and, and part of that, the, uh, awards today was to our traffic unit. They have been outworking diligently to have an impact on our traffic collisions, uh, slowing down traffic. They've been hitting our school zones incredibly hard, and also making sure that they are having a very thorough, um, follow-up on traffic collisions where, when there are convictions necessary, they're definitely following up. And in the end is the, uh, summary of our overall crime for the city. Uh, uh, we're going to continue to work exceptionally hard and focus in on our, um, our crimes against persons to bring our fourth quarter down, to have an overall reduction in crime for the city of Lakewood. Um, the major challenge for this year has been the, uh, adoption of, uh, additional laws that have hindered officers' effectiveness and ability to make arrests in a timely manner. Uh, but even with that, we still show an increase in our arrest, and officers will continue to work very aggressively, uh, to keep our, our ci- all of our citizens safe and, uh, try to reduce crime and the fear of crime. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Chief. I, I know that you gave stats somewhere on the flock camera system, but it sounds like they're pretty significant. I don't know how many, I think it was like a thousand vehicles already identified that were stolen that have come through.
Um, it, it hasn't been quite a thousand. It has been, uh, last time I checked, it was been in the hundreds, like around between three and four hundred now. Uh, the, just the other night, um, officers were able to, um, follow several, um, um, notifications or alerts on the flock safety, uh, camera, and we were able to recover multiple vehicles. Um, the, the problem for us, and the one thing that bothers me is, as chief of police, is, um, just not long ago, maybe, maybe a few days ago, we had a young soldier who bought his first vehicle. He went and bought him a Kia. And he drove it for about two hours and went to grab something to eat, and when he came back out, his, uh, new vehicle that he had just saved so much for, uh, was no longer there. Um, and, and so for a, a young individual, it is their first major purchase, their first vehicle, and you're so excited. Uh, I, it, it breaks my heart that, you know, you have to endure that as, as a young person just starting out.
Yeah, it's crazy. Any other questions on the data, Mr. Bran Sitter?
Yes, Chief. Um, when, you know, earlier this year, the council took some actions and passed a number of ordinances that particularly related to, uh, uh, you know, public use of controlled substances and of, and, and, and also about, uh, uh, trespassing and storing property in public spaces, and, you know, the second one was somewhat dependent upon getting cooperation of the system of sh- shelter systems in the, in the county. Uh, and I know they haven't been in place that long, but, um, have you seen some successes or encountered any, any real challenges with beginning enforcement of those ordinances?
Um, what we've seen is, is success with those, uh, ordinances. This helped us tremendously. Um, officers have made some arrests, uh, but for the most part, it's just another tool for us to make sure that, um, blatant drug use and things of that nature are not happening in the community. Uh, and, and trust me, the word gets out very quickly. Uh, once officers start to make arrests, uh, the word gets out very quickly, and they know to move on, and so it's been a tremendous, uh, help for us to have that tool in place, uh, and they have been able to implement, um, uh, some arrests as it relates to that.
So enforcement actions, arrests?
Arrests, yes.
Um, or things, where within this, the chart that we're looking at on summary of crimes, would that, is that data an element of one of those lines?
So, um, if, if anywhere, that would be just under our misdemeanor arrest or gross misdemeanor arrest. Um, and, and so i- it's not broken down by individual crime that someone has been arrested for. It's just a matter of, it goes into the normal number of arrests that officers have made. Uh, we have, we don't, we don't track by, uh, um, any just simple new law that, that takes effect. We can go back and try to, uh,
Okay, I, I.
Everything that we have.
I, I, I'm more concerned about, about arrests relating to, to drugs, both in, whether it's the state law that we're enforcing, or it's our own ordinances, to be able to go and do that, that I just not particularly seeing wherein, uh, yeah, whether, whether there are other crimes of interest, or there, or there are society crimes, or where they would be, and if the the, 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 the data and the narrative that we're hearing about there being such a concern about, uh, uh, the range of drugs that are available to folks, and as we're getting entering into a period of time over the next couple of years to use some opioid money that is going to come to the city to counteract that, you know, getting some data as to, um, where there's, what sort of crimes, is, is, is there something actionable on, will be helpful a year from now.
Okay, no problem. Uh, considering it's relatively new, it's something that we could probably go back and, uh, cull that information from our arrest data.
Any other questions or thoughts? Councilmember Laura Sella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this may tie into what Councilmember Bran Sitter asked, but, uh, I see there's a big spike in gross misdemeanors this year, like two hundred and fifty percent. What does that accounted to or connected to?
Um, the gross misdemeanors are, are, y- you know, just basic arrests that officers are making for various crimes. We don't, uh, break them down by the different labels of crimes. It's just, uh, an increase in gross misdemeanors that we have. Um, so I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you about the gross, the direct number.
There wasn't like.
It's not broken down.
Emphasis or anything that drove that.
Well, definitely, we've had several emphasis. We do work our emphasis, um, in our town center and other areas where we've seen, uh, various crimes, but, uh, they're not necessarily broken down.
Okay.
Per se.
Thank you.
All right.
It could be based on the dollar amount at issue, right, that was stolen, whatever that.
Yes.
Can change the category from misdemeanor to gross misdemeanor, so. Well, great. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Smith.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just want to, while you're there, uh, again, extend appreciation to you and to the entire department for the wonderful display of your heroism tonight and dedication to the residents of this community in all things public safety, because it's it's uncommon that the average resident gets a flavor of the depth of the engagement in the various calls for service that our officers encounter on a daily basis, and so this is a poignant reminder that, uh, despite all sorts of, uh, negative stuff we all hear in the news, that there are many, many, many positive things that happen with regard to public safety in our own community. Thanks to all of you, so appreciate that.
Thank you for allowing us to honor that. Appreciate.
Yep.
All of you.
Anything further, Mr. Confield?
Um, yes, Mayor, I got a couple of updates if I, if I may. Um, the first is, as you know, City of Lakewood has been taking the lead, working with the mayors of the cities of Pierce County on developing a, um, essentially the legislative agenda, and we've drafted a letter, and it's making its rounds through, um, a number of cities. Um, I'm pleased to report that to date, and we just, we, we sent out the, the draft last Thursday. So, um, as of this afternoon, we have six cities who are on board with what's being proposed. That's Bonnie Lake, Buckley, Geek Harbor, Lakewood, Sumner, and Puyallup, but I do know a number of other cities, um, will be, uh, will be signing on as well. Um, and real briefly, I just wanted to, you know, outline the five asks from a regional standpoint that all the cities so far have come to an agreement on. Um, the first one is asking the legislature to provide tools to address auto theft and property crime, including, uh, including increased state funding to support regional enforcement and prosecution efforts. Number two, um, cities are asking for ongoing and stable funding for both co-responder programs, as well as therapeutic courts to be able to hire and retain staff. Uh, for example, we have our Behavioral Health Contact Team, you know, that's funded, you know, primarily with city monies, actually mo- all city monies. Um, but at the same time, we received a grant for a therapeutic court, hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, but it's only for a twelve-month period, and actually, um, by the time the state awarded it to us, it was September, and the grant only runs through June thirtieth, so there's no guarantee that that funding is going to continue, and that's something that all cities face. The third is asking the state legislature to make refinements to the pursuit policy to allow for the pursuit of stolen vehicles, given the number of criminals who use stolen vehicles to facilitate other crimes. However, also allowing local jurisdictions to individually continue with their current policy against all pursuits, because there are some cities that do that, or the city of Lakewood, we have a very restrictive pursuit policy. So again, provide options and alternatives at the local level rather than a top-down approach from. So again, provide options and alternatives at the local level rather than a top-down approach from the state legislature. We, um, um, also asking the legislature to amend the law to allow for a parent or a guardian. To provide consent of a juvenile to be interviewed by law enforcement to include consent to search property. And this has become a huge issue as we've seen this significant spike in juvenile crime. Cause right now, when juveniles are contacted, um, you know, they, you know, they, we, officers can't talk to them. Um, only an attorney can, even if the mom or dad or the guardian says, yes, please do. Um, the state law, um, again prohibits that. So returning some of that control to, um, the parents and guardian is something that, um, a lot of cities, um, are, are, are supporting. Also asking the state legislature to provide more, um, funding. For the, um, basic law enforcement academy and removing the twenty-five percent cost share. It was about five or six years ago when the state legislature decided to impose that cost sharing on local jurisdictions at the academy. Up until that point in time, it was funded solely by the state. Um, and, uh, actually those are, those are the five, those are the five asks. So, um, we're, um, hoping to get this wrapped up in the next week or two. Um, we have identified a, I'm sorry, November first as a date where we'll be sending out invitations to all the Pierce County legislatures. City of University Place has kindly volunteered to take that on since they're going to be hosting the meeting. Again, it's on November first, it's a Wednesday from six to eight P M. If for some reason we can't get, you know, a good sizable number of, number of legislators there, we'll try and do another one in December. As well, so that's kind of the thought process. In addition, once cities and towns here in Pierce County come to a comprehensive agreement on what the letter is going to be. Um, we're, we're going to talk about reaching out to our Pierce County elected officials, including our local county council member, the executive. Prosecuting attorney and sheriff in particular, so just, um, again, wanted to give you an, an, an update on that. Um, as a follow-up from your retreat last Monday. Wanted to ask the council if it was okay if we could provide the following dates to your state legislators. Um, for a joint meeting, you do this every, you know, every November, December. And so based on kind of where your calendar is right now, and we're presuming you'll have an adopted state legislative agenda. Um, by the middle of November, if not sooner, um, but we've identified Wednesday, November twenty ninth. Wednesday, December thirteenth or Thursday, December fourteenth, and it would be from six to eight P M and it would be here in the council chambers. And Mayor, unless there's any objection, maybe you could kind of just, um, let me know if that would work for the council. Cause what we'd like to do is would not, would like to reach out first to the twenty-eighth legislative district and then the twenty-ninth as well. Um, and then once we have that down, um, I think I know in the past, the council would also like to have a joint meeting with your county council member. But we want to first get the state legislative, um, agenda squared away first.
Can you give us those three dates again? It's the twenty-ninth, uh, Wednesday?
Yes, uh, Wednesday, November twenty-nine. Wednesday, December thirteen. And Thursday, December fourteen. So I'd just ask if you could check your calendars and maybe the next day or so, cause their schedules are filling up very, very.
That would be a six o'clockish timeframe?
That's, that's correct, unless the council wanted to do something earlier as well.
And long as we're on that topic, any of those dates problematic for anyone? So looking at the thirteenth or fourteenth of December. Anybody have a problem with either one of those two dates? Thirteen or fourteen December look like they're open.
Hey.
The majority.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Um, and then just, uh, as it relates to upcoming events, um, this Wednesday, the City of Lakewood in partnership with the Pierce County Community, Community Navigator Team. It's going to be sponsoring a Pierce County Thriving Together Small Business Resource Event over at the McGavick Center. Kicks off at eight thirty in the morning, goes to noon, and it's just an opportunity for, um, business owners, entrepreneurs to get together and. Um, kind of get, um, a lay of the land, if you will, of the nonprofit organizations, government agencies. And other community leaders that offer small business support. So, um, again, over at the McGavick Center this Wednesday, beginning at eight thirty A M. Um, jumping out later in the month, October thirtieth, um, uh, which is a Monday from eleven thirty A M to one P M. Your board member on the A W C board, who is the ordering mayor, Josh Penner. Um, which represents Thurston and Pierce Counties is hosting a, um, kind of a, a meeting with all of the. Representatives, um, from Pearson Thurston County that he represents on the A W C board to talk about legislative priorities. And I know the deputy mayor has signed up to go and if there's anybody else that wishes to go, please let me know. I, I plan on attending as well. And then, um, I mentioned November first, um, and then November second. Thursday morning from eight to ten A M, S S M C P, the elected officials council over at Eagles Pride, uh, golf course. And, uh, so that's the, there's two of those a year, and so this is the November event. And then on November eleventh and twelfth, which is a Saturday and a Sunday, we will have our fall community cleanup. From eight A M to two P M on both days and that'll be over at the transfer station off of, um, South Tacoma Way and Ninety Second. So, um, with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Confield as we're all scrambling to put all these dates? And double check dates in our calendars here. S S M C P on the second of November. I know it's on the city calendar, but I gotta figure out, get it all to the other calendars here. Okay, if there are no other questions of Mr. Confield, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So we'll now turn to council comments. Let's start with Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a reminder, Thursday at six o'clock, P C R C meeting, maybe we'll vote on that. Those things. Um, and, uh, truck and tractor day was great.
Great, Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll get this set up. Alright, I've got a lot of stuff this time. It was a busy week last week. Uh, I was able to attend three neighborhood association meetings, the Telecom, the North Lakewood and Lake City meetings. Uh, and at the Telecom meeting, uh, there was lots of discussion about Union Avenue construction pushing traffic to the side streets. And there's concern about safety around Telecom Elementary, so, uh, anything we can do to, to give our Lakewood PD folks a heads up. To get some extra attention down there would be appreciated. Uh, at the North Lakewood meeting, uh, our wonderful city manager gave his state of the city address. Uh, and there was a lot of discussion about equity and adult family homes. I also got to meet, uh, one of our inaugural council members, Anne, from when the city was founded.
Oh, Kirk Davis, yeah.
Yeah, she was, she was great. Uh, and then at the Lake City Neighborhood Association Meeting, uh, our. Um, Parks and Rec Director Mary Dodsworth provided an overview of the American Lake Park Plan. Uh, as well as, uh, the, uh, discussion about street ends and, uh, fishing access for people. Um, and the one bit of feedback we had was around communication, uh, and how people appreciate our increased presence on social media. But wanted to know if it was possible for there to be even more, perhaps our departments of the city could have their own social media. Things that are managed by our communications department, but could be specific to things like parks and public works and communications. Something to consider for our communications department. Beyond that, I was able to attend the, uh, Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council meeting as our representative for Lakewood. Uh, there were eleven members there and it was being our first meeting, we talked about the purpose of that group. Uh, and it's really providing oversight, audit and accountability for municipalities, uh, in our region. They, they asked for a volunteer to serve as the chair. Uh, it was quiet for a while and then I, uh. Stepped up and was selected to be chair of that, uh, so I'll be working with Pierce County Auditor as we go down that path. Uh, as council member Boki said, truck and tractor day was wonderful. Uh, everyone I saw there had a smile on their face, lots of kids were excited about all the pumpkins. Uh, and I wanted to give a shout out to the youth council for running a lot of the events there. Uh, they, they really stepped up and they were, they were running the pumpkin launching and, and a couple of other things, so that was, that was exciting to see. Uh, I want to welcome our newest member of the city, Chris Davis. He's the neighborhood coordinator. Uh, he was at each of the, uh, neighborhood association meetings and was really engaging and people were really excited to have the opportunity to meet him. Uh, so I look forward to, to seeing more of him as we, uh, as we move forward. Uh, and then the other thing next week, uh, Edgewater Park Master Plan Review is going to happen. I saw that went up to the public, but I want to make sure that folks know about that so they can be here to participate and be a part of that discussion. And it's been a point of contention that people feel may, they may not be as included as they want to be, but this is their opportunity to show up and take out. It's on the twenty-fourth, uh, it's next Tuesday, I believe. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to mention, uh, on Friday, the thirteenth last week, I had the opportunity to go on a Fort Silicon Park Lantern tour. That was put on by Pretty Gritty Tours, which is, uh, an organization locally that, uh, uh, we heard a little bit about from the. Uh, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board that they wanted to partner with them a little bit. Um, they've got a video out about the Tacoma Speedway.
Oh, great.
Which is really cool, but this, this lantern tour was really, really neat. Uh, it was at night in the dark, bunch of people with flashlights, there were probably thirty of us. Uh, and we started in the cemetery at Fort Silicon Park and learned the history there. There's over three thousand graves, many of them. Uh, and are anonymous, right? They're just numbers. Uh, and then that tour went up to the Hill Ward where lots of things happened. And, uh, and then down past Wahop Lake in the dark, uh, so it was, it was appropriately spooky on Friday the thirteenth.
Great.
Uh, and as they offer more of those events, I encourage people to sign up for them.
That's, that's a really fun thing, especially if they did something, you know, like a little bonfire.
Yeah, well, it was a lantern that he carried around.
Lighter or something at the end or whatever.
Yeah, that would be really good too. Uh, and I know that they've partnered with, uh, our Parks Department to get permitting and that kind of stuff to operate after dark in Fort Silicon Park.
That's great.
So that's the great opportunity to keep doing.
Yeah, great, great report.
Yeah.
Councilmember Branstad, or can you top a grave walk?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, uh. I, I did this past Friday, attending the, the Philippine American Youth Summit. Uh, that took place at the Thomas Middle School. Um, and it was a, uh. Uh, an uplifting event, um, that, um. It reminded me of the youth summits that our youth council puts on in that it was, uh. Uh, planned and, uh, put forward by, by youth. Um, and there was a great deal of discussion about. Uh, young people from Philippine American families having a great deal of pride and respect. Uh, and interest in their own culture and of, uh, yeah, so. Sort of, sort of owning it, okay, that, uh, that's a part of their identity and then, and, and that, and that they were glad of that. To be able to go and do that. On the nineteenth on Thursday, I'm going to be attending the, um. Civic Health Summit put on by the Lieutenant Governor in, in Renton. Um, so I'm going to, um, go there for that and I, my plan is on the twentieth. I'll be attending the, uh, the Lacey Mayor's Gala and that's really, uh. It's not so much of a Lacey-focused fundraising event, but it's a fun, it's a veterans-focused fundraising event. Because it funds the, the Veterans Hub that's located on the, uh. Uh, in, in, in Lacey on, on the college satellite campus there, to be able to go and do that. And then I have some, um. Personal affairs that I have to take care of, um, and it's going to require me to, uh, travel to Korea. And I'll be missing the next two meetings that we have. The, the meeting that snuck up to us on the fifth Monday, cause I originally planned this, so maybe I could do that. But, 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 but I, I, I will be, be gone for the next two meetings. And, and, and as a. I suppose it's a kudo to the, uh, I T department is that then is, as they have enhanced security. The cybersecurity of the city, that, uh, uh, city computers don't work if you're not in the country. Okay, you, 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 you can't. And you can't communicate back to be able to go and do that. So I will be, uh, you know, in, in, in sort of in a stealth, uh, stealth mode while I'm going.
Well, thank positive thoughts for us. Very good. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I was able to attend the Arts and Culture Coalition of Pierce County last week. And that was just great to see, um, all the opportunities in Pierce County. And especially it was really wonderful to have the event held at our very own Lakewood Gardens. So that was wonderful, just, I think there's a lot of partnership opportunities with them, so that was really great to make that connection. And, uh, this Wednesday I will be at the Daffodil Princess Induction at Harrison Prep and I will be judging.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. I, I can't top, uh, council member Lawrence Ellis' ghost tour locally. But I, I did take a tour in hers in Savannah, Georgia, where the country's most haunted city. While we were staying in the basement Airbnb of a three hundred year old home that was built over a graveyard. So, uh, you, you can survive, but you don't get a lot of sleep. Um, but on a serious note, looking forward and for change, I'm unaware of. The degree to which this might be applicable to Lakewood, but I would suggest that we have a policy of reviewing. Our job descriptions and postings to see to what extent we can eliminate. A requirement or a comment that a college degree is preferred or recommended. There are a number of, in the job market we have now. Uh, it, it's competitive, uh, you open up, uh, the jobs to more potentially qualified people. Um, college is now acknowledged to be very overpriced, uh. And has a lot of degrees that don't prepare you for the workplace, so it's less relevant. It's, it creates a greater barrier, um. Fortune five hundred companies, companies such as IBM, Google, Accenture and B of A have adopted this policy and driven down their. Job descriptions requiring a college degree. And in the win-win situation, this is considered by some studies as being the single most. Effective lever to diversify your workforce. Because disadvantaged folks, uh, have a greater barrier in obtaining the college degree. And are also less likely to apply for a job that says it's preferred. So, um, I, I think it's a win for everyone and.
Driver's license is another area.
Yeah. And so, uh, but, but this is a big one. It really has nothing to do with the quality of somebody's work. Uh, you know, what, if you're working in the human services department, what good does a history degree do for you? And if you have a social services degree, uh, how's that help you work in planning? There are obviously things like. Doctors, lawyers, engineers that have licensure requirements, uh, that are a different matter. But, uh, I would recommend that we take a hard look at that and see what we can do to. Attract more qualified candidates and diversify our workforce at the same time. That's it.
Great. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too attended the Truck and Tractor Day. It was a lot of fun. The lines was too long, so I didn't get to go to hay ride. I was disappointed. But anyway, it was a lot of fun and, um, lots of people there. I too attended the Filipino event at, uh, Thomas Middle School on Friday. Um, put on by the students, uh, I too was impressed with a lot of the, um, breakouts that they did. The students come up with what they want to do, but I went into one of the breakouts where they talked about how they make their clothing. And it was amazing. They take it from leaves and, and they spin it and they do all kinds of things with it. And they come out with these beautiful outfits. It was amazing. They, they had the machine, the video showing how that was done. So that was really good and thanks to Mr. Branstad, we were able to present the two, uh, young ladies that did the M C. We presented them with the city coin and thanked them for their presentation, so that was special for them. Food was excellent, of course, and the, yes, yeah, they're very good. I know you miss food. Um, so, yeah, and so, um, we had a dessert that was wrapped in a banana peel.
Oh, yeah.
That was good. They dipped it in sugar, but it was too sweet without sugar for me. It was good. It was a good event and, uh, well attended by the kids. And they did call out all of the people that they had invited, so all of you guys' names were called. And asked people to either raise a hand or whatever, and all the elected officials. So all of you guys' names were called and asked people to either raise their hand or whatever, and all the elected officials from the Pierce County and legislators and all, they called their names out and some few were there, but Curtis, Curtis, not Curtis. The school level of by the college, Pierce College, Lakes, Lakes High School did a great job. They had a panel and they were part of it, and different schools were, it was very well done, put on by the students, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to thank you all, the reports are kind of nice because they reflect how many events there are in the community and how much coverage we try to make throughout. And it's unique that everyone's going to different things, but collectively you're making a lot of touches out there, so I appreciate that, because none of us can be everywhere for every event, but it sounds like we're really doing a good job of making good coverage, so thanks for investing your time. In terms of investment of time and energy, again, Truck and Tractor Day was a fabulous event, it was probably the most populated Truck and Tractor Day in my recent memory, it seemed really full, at least when I was out there. And, yeah, good weather helps for sure, but again, kudos to staff for putting these essentially free events on that really attract a ton of families, because people enjoy coming out and having family and fun time together, and the food trucks are great, and you know, the booths are great, so a good time was had by all, and traffic management was great as well. The LPD ceremony tonight, I thought, was great. It's fabulous to recognize, as I mentioned, so many good deeds that sometimes go unnoticed, but thankfully here, they do not. And they're getting the recognition and acknowledgement that they deserve, not that they seek, but certainly that they deserve. And it's wonderful to see so many good things going on in the community, even though there there's plenty of tragedy all over the world, as we all know, but it's nice to see that we're making progress in our own community. I just had a, speaking of police issues and traffic issues, I was coming home and an LPD officer was appropriately telling me to not come any further, because there was a big accident at the intersection, it was Ardmore. I was on the phone with Mr. Bokey as I was driving, trying to get home. Ardmore and Custer, when you come through that slip lane, you guys know that particular one, there's that yield sign. And people are always zipping through that yield sign, so if you don't watch when you're coming from Custer to make that left onto Ardmore, they'll zip through and you get nailed, and somebody got nailed tonight. And so there were, you know, police cars and fire trucks and stuff all over the place. And a similar problematic slip lane, I have been told, because people are yammering at me about doing something. Coming off of Gravely Lake, to the first roundabout there, as you go to the right to Nianza, there's that slip lane. And then as folks are in the roundabout, those people who are zipping through the slip lane and not acknowledging the yield sign, someone's going to get killed over there. No, it's coming off of Gravely on the major slip lane toward Nianza to the right. Yeah, yeah, the exit there, Gravely Lake exit. So I don't know if, Mr. Coffield, if there's any sort of ability to have a flashing yield sign, I don't know if we have any power at those areas, but I've heard on probably five or six occasions, people who have reported challenges with that slip lane coming off of the highway exit to Gravely, going to the far right on Nianza, and almost getting clipped by people in the roundabout. So anyway, or getting clipped by people in the slip lane as they're going in the roundabout, excuse me. So anyway, it's an issue with those slip lanes for some reason. Part of it's just inattention on the part of drivers, but it is what it is. So that is all I have, we will now recess. Oh, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yep.
Follow up on traffic comments. There've been some comments on social media that the yellow lights at some school zones aren't being deployed, that it's reverted to signs. I don't know if that's correct, you know, it's like reading it in the newspaper, it's treated as hypothetical, but we've trained people over the years now to look for the yellow lights and flashing yellow lights to know that a school zone is activated. So without, at least without some public education, if there is a reversion to signs and hours like it used to be in the olden days, I would think we need to reach out, and personally, I think the traffic, yellow traffic lights or flashing lights are a good idea that makes things safer, because in my case, it makes me remember there's a school zone, so just, I guess it's, for my information, I'd like to know what the situation really is, and seeing how, see how it's being addressed.
Yeah, thank you for that, and the more we can do, you know, at a reasonable expense to ensure better safety, the better, I think. So that's a good point. Okay, so now the council will recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes, pursuant to RCW 4231101G, to review the performance of a public official. We're not expected to take action following that session, other than to come back and adjourn the meeting. So at this point, we'll be in recess for thirty minutes.